Go. Probably should ask that first. My ear probably looks like another bed. Good, no? Take two. Good evening, everyone. We will call to order the regular meeting. Today is October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and the time is six oh six P M. Mister Hill, may we get a roll call, please?
Miss Falkenburg?
Finally here.
Mrs. King? Miss Lee?
Here.
Mister Sanders?
Here.
Mrs. Shell?
Here. Pledge of allegiance, if we could all stand, the flag is to your right. To the flag of the United States of America.
Seven A M. on Wednesday, followed by transportation at eight thirty. So we'll have hit all the buildings and maintenance and transportation. So decided to get those rolling tomorrow morning. Behind the scenes, not quite ready for an update yet, but M T. Josh and I have been reviewing the state budget bills. As I'm sure the board has been getting numerous updates from BASSA and O S B A. Next step, next to bring it, also reviewing cuts and programs, cancellations, things like that. On how these budget bills can affect the board's updated and more subtle. Coffee talks begin this week. Looking forward to many people on Friday, Bakery Winherd, and also next Friday here at Brush, which is Ocean's Cafeteria. And also giving building tours by the admin. So if you're available, those coffee talks are this Friday and next week. And finally, pleased to share Phase One of the Master Facility Plan will begin soon on the third floor of Brush High School. Marking the first visible step in our long-term facility improvements. These have been discussed at numerous board meetings. The Master Facility Plan is available on our website. But again, I just wanted to let people know that we are in Phase One of that, and we will be beginning soon. Lastly, there's some people behind me that I want to recognize tonight before I turn this over. October is Principal Appreciation Month across the United States and Ohio. And with that, in my opinion, we have some of the best principals around.
Anything for our kids, our families, and everything in between. And tonight, you're going to be updated on the academics, which is our number one priority here in the district. It's our number one piece of business that we take care of and what we do, we're an academic institution. And they have to deal with everything in between, and it's a lot. So with that, at this time, briefly, they're probably all mad at me behind me, I can't see them right now. But I want to call up our principals. Sunview, Miss Taylor, Roland, Miss, hold on applause, we'll do applause at the end. Miss Marshall over at Roland, Mister, yeah, come on up, you're gonna stand right in the middle, yep, all of you, keep coming. Uh huh. Mister Lasky at Adrian, Miss Young at Greenview, Doctor Fuller at Memorial. And last but not least, Miss Harris over at Brush High School. And I'd love for everybody to give them a round of applause. Oh, we have an assistant principal in there, too. I was like, hey, I didn't see, I'm sorry. They're a team over there, they're a team, I appreciate it. So again, just wanted to say thank you to our principals. We had a lot of support, a lot of things going on in the community. And now, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna turn it over to Doctor Fuller. And she's gonna present briefly with Mister Jackson, our assistant A D., on an exciting leadership initiative that began last year. And then from there, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Bastok and Miss Bishko for update on the report card.
Good evening, everyone. As Doctor Capel said, I'm the principal at Memorial, Doctor Fuller, it's a pleasure to see you all. I am excited to introduce this group of students. Mister Jackson did come and see me last year, so it's her second year doing this leadership program. These students are absolutely amazing. Mister Jackson had the phenomenal idea to do some type of leadership for our athletes. And so, without further ado, I'd like for him to explain the program and our students to come up, don't be shy.
So, we, the name of our program is called the Arc Caphony Student Athlete Association. And the purpose of the program is to kind of help build our student athletes into leaders. That will assist our school staff in creating a great environment of positivity. The goal of it is to impact our schools, community, and fellow peers. But also teaching our kids how to have their appropriate character traits with a positive attitude. So I'm gonna have each kid kind of explain, because they come up with their own core values. So last year, our first group, they had different values that they thought made a student athlete. I loved that group, but this group came up with some incredible ideas to follow up. So our next, or our five traits that we have, first up is sportsmanship. And Herbert Webster Junior is gonna explain that.
We put sportsmanship on the, as one of our values, because sportsmanship should be used for all athletes as they show, as they show respect, which is also one of our core values, to other athletes, whether they win or lose.
Then up next, we have respect, which is led by our captain, Christina Kopp.
We chose the word respect just because we deserve respect playing on the court, whether if we're having a bad day or a good day. As a show to communicate, so communicating with our teammates if we're feeling upset that day, not blowing off on somebody just because we're feeling upset, and just a show of a way to respect each other and treat other people the way we want to be treated.
Now, the next one, I'm actually gonna speak on, and this is something that they actually, we kind of had a joint idea on. So positive mental attitude, I attended Walsh University, played football there, and our coach always used to talk about P M A, P M A, P M A. And as I'm going through college, we kind of like mocked it a little bit, but as I've gotten older, I really started to truly understand about the importance of having a positive mental attitude. So our kids, we were talking for our first meeting, and we were talking about, it's so important that we not only are positive towards our teammates, but ourselves, and it's a lot harder for student athletes as they grow up, a lot of pressure, social media, different things. So we have to make sure our mental attitude, and we're always encouraging ourselves, but not only that, just making sure we encourage our teammates as well. So we came up with the P M A mantra, so I know Coach Jensen would be super proud about that. And then next up, we have leadership, which is Omari Robinson.
We chose the word leadership because it is useful on and off, like out of school and in school, because it could show, like, it shows that we could be respectful to our peers and staff, adults, and all that. And, yeah.
He's a little nervous, he's a little nervous.
That's leadership.
Yep, yep, yeah, that's big, that's big. And last but not least, we have hard work, and we have Carter Nixon, that will explain how hard work is one of our core values as well.
Basically, we chose hard work because on the court, you gotta give a hundred percent effort as well as you do in school for like grades and stuff like that, to like get a positive reward out of it.
So, just to kind of wrap up, how the kids are picked, pretty much each program, a coach gives a recommendation just based off of what they see throughout the season. So we've had some people who are starters, we had some people who aren't starters, and they display those leadership traits. So pretty much what they do is, they're recommended to me, and then I had a meeting at the end of the school year when they were in the seventh grade, and gave them teacher recommendation sheets, because I really want the teachers to kind of be the voice on if this kid, you know, deserves to be in this group. So the kids had to go out to find one or two teachers to sign off on their letter. They did a really good job of taking care of that. They got me their letters, I want to say back the next day, if I'm not mistaken. And then we kind of look at, just obviously like attendance, we also look at academics as well. And we want to also look at, you know, suspensions and stuff like that, too. I'm super proud, I think this group's gonna really make a great difference, and we'll be working with student council in the building as well to kind of help, you know, increase the school spirit in the building, so that's about it.
I just want to add one last thing, the students did design the sweatshirt that you see. Mine doesn't match the red dress, I don't have mine on, but these are fantastic, you can see the, everything that they think an athlete is supposed to have, and then the front has the Arc Caphony, so, great job, by them, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
I have a question, I'm sorry. Just real quick, because, so if I'm hearing correctly, these are all eighth graders, correct?
Yes.
So at the end of this school year, they'll go on and they come to Brush?
Yes.
So does this model, does these markers come over with them when they join athletics here at Brush? Does this program also extend, do we have some of our athletic captains that are here at Brush? Maybe reach out to them, because, I mean, this is great, don't get me wrong, but if I could also see a fuller picture of how it affects them when they come to Brush next year as well?
So, I could speak on that.
Go ahead.
Yep, so, the goal is, the, because we already have like a freshman crew that's here. There was a mixture of my crew and some of the kids last year met together. We did a training through Positive Coaching Alliance, P C A. And the goal was to be able to kind of go through these same different things. So the purpose is to try to feed this group up into Brush, and then we're gonna continue it here. So if I'm not mistaken, I know that's supposed to start in the winter, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
And I'll add on to it, they invited me to speak last year to the group, and I'm actually coming back.
October twenty-fourth.
To, October twenty-fourth. And, no, and just to see, I wasn't sure what I was walking into, and to walk into a leadership group that was athletes, however, they weren't talking to me about athletic things, they were talking about initiatives around the school, and the way they can improve the school aspect of it. And I'm really excited to come back this year and see what, see what they can get done, too, so.
But I just want to say, thank you for everything you're doing as an athletic director for our district, because it's so easy, you laser focus on stats and what they're doing on the courts or the fields, but for you to focus on what they're doing outside, and you realize they're more than just athletes, they're our future, so thank you for that.
I wanted to add to that, to you young folks, right, you all are doing something that's awesome. I just vacated an alumni board seat at Marion College. They introduced a program like this last year, they saw one hundred percent retention in their football team for the first time ever based upon a program similar to this. I kind of honestly think your values are stronger, and you all are student-led as opposed to institution-led, which I think adds a lot, but as you start moving into high school and thinking about athletics and admission to college, right, your grades are very important, your athletic ability is important, but those leadership skills sometimes make the difference. So stick to the leadership opportunities and see how far that'll carry you. That was my story, there's some highlights on YouTube, I was semi-decent, but my leadership ability allowed for me to go to what I think was a great school, have a great experience, and then continue to lead in my career. So good luck to you all, keep doing the same thing.
I've got one last thing to add, I forgot this part, this is the most important part.
We want to, we always want to come up with a community service project. My last year's group, they had a great ton of ideas, their eighth grade trip to Washington, D C. Kind of threw one of our ideas off, they wanted to host like a youth camp, but they wanted to have all the different sports, which, I'll talk with this group to see what they want to do, but last year's group ended up, we ended up giving away food at a food, at a church. So the goal is to set that up after they, you know, are promoted to high school, to give them the opportunity to earn some community service hours, but honestly, just build, like, you know, that whole community piece, because they did such a great job last year with just giving food out and connecting with the people, and, you know, it wasn't easy. It's a lot of work that goes into those food drives, so this group, I think, is gonna take it to the next level.
Thank you, great job, guys.
Yeah, nice work.
Miss Cash, did you get a picture of them?
I'm gonna go on.
Oh, okay.
So, now I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Bastok and Miss Bishko for the report card. Very proud of our three and a half stars, and also, over the last four years, the principals have been trained, attended professional development, have gotten constructive feedback, and under the leadership of Mrs. Bastok and Miss Bishko, Miss Riesling, we've watched this thing grow. And everybody knows, you know, every, the magic happens in the classroom, but behind the scenes, the work that's accomplished, the work that's been done over these last four years, we just wanted to say thank you, and turn it over to you.
All right, so I'm excited, this year, we decided to do something a little different. As Doctor Capel stated, we, we definitely put frameworks in the C N I office together, we make sure that we are vetting curriculum materials, we make sure that we have the high-quality curriculum, we do all those things, but the work is actually carried out in the buildings. And so, in talking to Doctor Capel, we thought, who better to tell the story than the principals themselves on their report card data? So I'm just gonna start off, I did a lot of presentations, I think, in the past few years, explaining the pieces of the report card. But, so here is our overall rating, as you can see, achievement, progress, gap closing, graduation, early literacy, and for the first time, we have college career workforce and military readiness on here. So, I thought she was saying, I thought you had a question here, I'm sorry. So, I'm gonna let them tell their story, and you can see how their story and their report card feeds into ours, and then I'll follow up at the end with any, any of your questions and some tidbits for you, all right? I think Adrian is first, all right?
All right, Mister Lasky.
Thank you very much, very, very proud of our report card. We earned four out of the five stars. In achievement, we also got four out of five stars. We had eighty-nine point seven percent on our performance index, and that measures how every student does. It's not just the high students, but every single student, and of course, the goal is to help every single student improve to be their very best. On the bottom there, the chart is a little bit small, but you could see our advanced placement, accomplished, proficient, then basic and limited. So what we did is, we scored eighty-nine point seven percent. Three more tenths of a percent, we would have had five stars, so we're right on the cusp. When you look at the, the graph on the bottom there and the chart, the area that we really need to improve upon is, is moving our students up from limited to basic and from basic to proficient. If you could just slide back just a second, please. But again, really, really proud of this, right on the cusp of those five stars. And talking with the staff members, what we attribute it to is, is high expectations for our learners. Everybody who comes to Adrian, we have high expectations, we're gonna help them become the best that they can be. Collective teacher efficacy, teachers working together, teachers planning together, teachers looking over assessments, what, what went well, what are some maybe obstacles that students might encounter before those lessons begin. The inter-reading program focuses on text evidence questioning, really helps students build up their endurance. Instead of just giving a simple answer or a two-word answer, students are forced to go back into the text, find their evidence, and write it out in a good, complete, third-grade sentence. Improvement in explicit writing begins at the very early levels, because but so, and then we continue to build it with our extended responses. Eye-ready diagnostic testing that provides detailed, data-driven reports for those teachers to talk about, and ways to help students improve during their no new instruction time. And then again, parent and guardian support, we can't do any of this without the partnership with our parents and guardians. Two areas that we can improve upon, one of them is, is our early literacy. We did a very good job. So, we did an outstanding job, we scored eighty-four percent proficient in our third-grade reading test. We also did a phenomenal job of promoting each and every third grader made it to fourth grade. The area that we can improve upon is improving our K-three literacy, and that is, our students, when they come to school in the fall, they take the eye-ready test. If they don't get that baseline, they get, they get rimped to kind of help them with their reading skills, phonics, phonemic awareness, reading fluency. That score then isn't matched again until the students come back the following fall. So we have a whole year of instruction where students have to kind of show that they've improved or they don't have to be on that rimp anymore. One of the areas that we have to improve at Adrian is continuing that summer learning. So, I really believe that the staff at Adrian, the teachers do a fantastic job of helping kids while they're with us. But in the summertime, we need to instill that love of learning, we've got to keep that, that enthusiasm, that motivation, that momentum going. So programs like working with the library to get summer reading programs, get more of our kids involved, educational websites for students to become excited about, and again, continue that learning, that's gonna be a big goal for us at Adrian. So when students do come back in the fall, we don't have that summer slide, man, they pick up right where they left off when they left us in the spring, and we're gonna crank it out. And then finally, gap closing, gap closing for Adrian, we, that comes back to our chronic absenteeism. And we missed the mark by so, so much. If my calculations are correct, um, we met gap closing on that very last Friday of the school year. We had our field day. Everybody was happy. And then we still had school Monday and Tuesday and there were a lot of families that started their summer vacation and we missed the gap closing by this much. So we have some things in place, way to honor students, not only individually. We have, um, a- attendance awards by the week for students who come every week. We have, uh, attendance awards for students who are improving their attendance. And then we also have classroom, uh, awards. And I went down and was just talking with the custodian one time in our basement. And there's these old like bowling trophies and things from like the nineteen sixties and seventies. I thought, let's put these to use. So at Adrian, every single month, we have an outstanding student of the month. And we give the, these trophies to our three greatest, three classrooms with the best attendance. So, um, we're gonna continue to build that and, and again, um, we're gonna hit that mark for chronic absenteeism this year. Thank you. It is now my pleasure to announce Ms. Sylvia Marshall from Roland Elementary.
I appreciate that, Mr. Lasky. Thank you for the announcement. Um, as you heard, I'm Sylvia Marshall from Roland Elementary School. I'm honored to be here as always, um, board members, um, uh, district. Thank you for having me. Um, and I just wanna start Roland, um, areas of success. Um, what that definitely start with is definitely you and your trust in me. I think, um, putting a lot of mentors in front of me, some that are still here. Um, one that's no longer here, he's somewhere in Euclid. Shout out Cory Russell. E plus R equals O. You remember that, Mr. Cable? You taught me that, um, your event, your response equal your outcome. So when we look at our success here at Roland and even our areas of growth, what we have to remember is we always talk about that response able. And I want you to remember that, that we are response able at Roland. So our areas of success, Mr. Lasky broke it down for you very good, that PI, that performance index. What thing you're gonna notice about the performance index at Roland, um, we have over the years. As you can see, we are growing over the years. The story of Roland is a story of growth. You all know we are three stars. We claim that three stars. We're proud of that three stars because that three stars is growth. Our districts, we have fours and fives. They deserve those and we are proud of them too. But we are a story of growth. You can see, um, we have climbed for over those four years. You can see that we have increased the numbers in the areas. You can see some of those lower numbers, some of those basic and limited are decreasing. You can see that on our performance index for over the years. I mean, look at that blue area and do you see what I see? Do you see it? Look closely. What do you see at the top of that? You see that little touch of green? Oh, don't slip on that touch of green at the top. Y'all see it? That touch of green at the top. We are growing at Roland and we continue to grow. And how are we doing that? Ray, close your ears. Fidelity, HMH, we stick to and then we stand on, y'all, what we stand on, a limdar? There go my people. Hey, y'all at home, and hold on, I can't continue without shouting out my people. Two oh seven, where you at? One ten, Celta, I can't do it without you. Hashtag Arland. If we had the comments on, I know y'all be putting it in there to my families. I love y'all. I love y'all. All right. Data-driven. We, we've been able to do data-driven decisions. We held data days last year. We held them. Ray, Tammy gave us permission. Josh paid for the substitutes. Because of what we are able to do, we were able to pull our teams together, do those data-driven days where we were able to see what our students needed and we were able to meet their needs by small groups. And that was a big thing. So belonging and engagement, the R factor. There we go again. We make sure that our building, our students have the R factor. They gonna tell you, stop right now, pause and ask your students the R factor. Those three things, relationships, responsibility, respect. If they do not have the R factor, learning is gonna be tough because we have to have those controllable classrooms. Without controllable classrooms, learning cannot happen. So we make sure we have that R factor. So we put that right there, those kind land initiatives. That's why the district, that's why all of us is up in our kind land. It helps us with those controllable classrooms so that we can do the business we need to do to improve our scores, not just on the state test. This is one measure. But overall success for all kids because it's a growth thing. And family partnerships, we'll talk about that in a second. But this is what I need you to look at. This is the real Roland right here. Yes, our performance index over the past four years has went up twenty-four points. But this is what we're dealing with right now. At Roland, right now, I have seventy-one students out of a hundred students on rimps. It is our job, all those people I just shouted out, to get those students to a seventy, a seven hundred, a passing score. I can't do that by myself. Next slide, please. So what do we need to be successful? How are we gonna keep improving? Like I said, it's a growth thing for us. Yes, right here. We were, we could have been three stars. We were just a little bit away from three stars on our, with our early literacy component. Just a little bit away. If we could have went up. We need to continue to move students. These are students that Mr. Lasky was just talking about. When he's talking about from fall to fall. These are the number of kindergartners. They test on KRA and then they test on eye-ready. So you can see from KRA to eye-ready, we're moving. We moved fifteen. But this is from eye-ready to eye-ready. We only moved four. This is first grade. So from first grade fall until they were second grade fall. This is second grade, from second grade fall to third grade fall. So what we need to do is we can't do this by ourselves. I'm in South Euclid. I have Mary Weelo. She says what? Come together and thrive, right? But I'm also in South Euclid. I have Dominic Cable. He says we are the destination community. But in order to do that, we pull those together. What do I say? And we say we're gonna do what? Keep it rolling and stand on what? You were supposed to know that. You failed the test. See, he's not learning. We, we're standing on business. So for all, and this is a shameless plug, my parents notice if they read that newsletter that come out two weeks. If you click through them and see the other ones, you saw last week, this was already in my newsletter with a video. And it said, this is our report card. And it said, how can you help? We need to increase our, right here. We want our families to help. And our families are helping us by increasing two percent study time at home. Because our teachers are going so far. But if we wanna go further, we have to increase our study time at home. So I'm in front of the camera and I'm saying, we have to increase our study time at home, two percent. Two percent looks different on each day. That's that eye-ready pathway. Pull out the computer, eye-ready pathway is at their level. Because if we can all work together, come together and thrive, then we gonna be that destination community because we standing on business, applying pressure two percent at a time. So that's what we need from you at Roland. I thank you. And now I'm bringing up Erica Taylor from SunView.
So I knew I had to be prepared to come after the Sylvia Marshall. Wonderful job. Um, so I am Erica Taylor, principal of SunView. I bring you warmth and sunlight from SunView. Um, wanna talk a little bit about our areas of success and with the utmost humility, I do express that I am grateful for our four and a half stars, uh, this school year. Um, I am thankful for, um, what the data is showing that will help us continue to grow as well. Because, just because we have four and a half stars doesn't mean we've arrived. We have still lots of work to do. So when we talk about our areas of success, um, we did meet, um, the, the twenty-three out of twenty-three, which gives us the, the points for the achievement rating, which was the five star. We also met our gap closing, which looks at subgroups. Um, and I think that's very important that our subgroups at SunView are also thriving. That looks at our economic disadvantage. That looks at our African-American students. That also looks at, um, our, uh, students that are Caucasian and all students. And so we want all of our students to be thriving and achieving. I brought this here because it's like a visual for me and sometimes we all need a visual. And this kinda represents, um, how that other, that achievement rating is calculated. So looking at the top, we really did really well with our advance. So once you get advanced, you get extra weight for the advance. So that's important to note. We got a lot of students, about fifty percent of our students were able to get that advance. And so that is weighting pretty strong. Then you also have accomplished. Accomplished also is another weight. So advance gives us like a one point three and then you get your accomplished with the one point two. You wanna keep, continue to get the students in those higher performance levels, which really worked out well for us. And again, unfortunately, we do have some students that are basic or limited. But we wanna continue to work on that basic and limited because basic does help us to make sure we're looking at those students so that they can achieve in those higher performance levels. So that is how, um, we were able to get into that achievement and that success with the performance index. Uh, the things that we do on a daily basis that help support that, um, we all talked about our emphasis on writing. Not just writing to say how my day was or what I did, did over the weekend. We're looking at text-dependent writing, writing according to what we're reading and responding to that. We're looking at those complex texts in our HMH that gives our students rich vocabulary, meaningful stories. We're looking at our invasions. Our invasions really, people, it's, I know it's hard. Our parents struggle with a lot of the strategies, but the beautiful part about it, the students are thinking critically. They are able to apply and strategize in different ways. There's no one way to answer a question. They're learning those strategies that help support them in their critical thinking. We do a lot of pre- and post-test and I think that's one of the keys to success. When the students start, they may not know in the beginning how to do multiplication. But the beauty of that is the growth mindset. This is what I scored first. Now look how much I grew. And the students get really excited to see how they may have scored very low in their pre-test, but by the end, they grew. And we celebrate any amount of growth. So that if they got twenty percent more the next test, that's growth. If they got fifty percent, that's growth. If they got all, all of them correct, yes. So again, teaching them the growth mindset at this age is really critical. Because they're youngsters and we wanna build on letting them know, you may not get it now, but you will later. Keep trying, keep practicing. Student data conferences, I think that, that really worked well with writing. Especially the teachers giving the students feedback on their writing one-on-one. That really helps students to grow with their writing and to see how they can improve. Um, eye-ready pathways, Mr. Lasky spoke of that. The pathways are tailored to each student's performance. If they are, uh, achieving at a higher level, le- the lessons are gonna be more challenging. If they need a little bit more support, the lessons will tailor right to where the students need. Teacher collaboration, planning, pacing, we all agree that that is a critical part with the teacher-based teams. And also, the achievement component was also achieved because of our attendance. And every year, we have our parents sign off on a pledge. We need you. We need every kid here every day. We'll give you an exception of one, but we really don't want them to miss any day. But we, we celebrate students who keep that commitment on a monthly basis. All right, so areas of improvement. Um, again, when we dig down into the data, there is work to be done. We still need to roll our sleeves up. And one of the critical areas is what, um, Dr. DJ Marshall talked about. Um, she talked about the, the early literacy. Um, so what this is showing, similar to, uh, the data that we saw earlier. We need to move students from year to year and we have to really figure out what's happening. Why, why aren't some students moving the needle? Why, why aren't we seeing that growth from year to year? So again, we want to address that and some of those steps that we're gonna take. Um, we started no new instruction last year, but we gotta be consistent with it. We have to be consistent. No new instruction is a block of time where we're targeting instruction for all students. Not just those that need the help, but also students that need enrichment as well. Um, those targeted groups. Some kids still need help with phonics in third grade. Some students need help with writing. We are breaking it down so students get what they need during that no new instruction time. Progress monitoring with branching minds, that is something that we started last year. But the consistency is the key this year. We have to take that data. We can't just say we're meeting with groups and then have no data to see how the students are growing. So that's what we're gonna be consistent with this year is progress monitoring, charting that data so that we can see how students are, um, thriving. And if they're not, we need to change something up. So that's part of our jobs to be good detectives and diagnosticians so that we can slice the pie. Maybe we're not getting right, getting it right. So we have to get it right. Um, the next couple of things I learned from one of the data sessions that our curriculum department set up for the principals is looking at that subscore. We have a proficiency score which is seven hundred. But that's not the only score she was sharing with us that we need to look at. We need to look at the subscore. How many students are meeting that promotion score and why? And so looking at those kids specifically, we're gonna take a better look at that this year. We're going to continue to do our school-wide, uh, support with writing, not with class, not just with classroom teachers, but also looking at our encore teachers who can really help drive that home for us. Uh, building leadership team meetings. This was something that we need to improve. When we meet as a building leadership team, we need to be talking about data. We need to make sure our agenda is really focused on what we're expecting from our students. And then finally, our MTSS meetings. We've heard that term, multi-tiered layers of, of support for our students. We started it last year, but again, we need to be consistent and we've already started off on a good start this school year. Monthly meetings, they're scheduled, they have an agenda. And I appreciate my SunView team, my teachers, my staff for helping not only to show the achievement, but also making improvements. So thank you so much for your time. It is my great pleasure to introduce the principal of Greenview. What's the new name? Upper Elementary, Ms. Megan Young.
All right, thank you. All right, so there are two areas of success that we really wanted to highlight for Greenview. Um, one of them, I'm actually gonna start over on the right side. Our fourth grade scores drastically increased. So that, the, the two pictures over there for ELA and math show from spring of twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-five. So you can see, um, just the huge amount of increase that we showed there in grade four. Some of the reasons that we came up with for how did that happen? Um, last year, a couple of years ago, we started to build the campus-wide expectations and procedures that we didn't really have before. So having those expectations as students move from fourth to fifth to sixth grade at Greenview really does help the students. Um, makes things very clear for them. We also, you've heard a lot about a focus on writing. We have a huge focus on writing and also our co-teaching models using different strategies, not just the one teacher, one assist. Um, having different models with station teaching and things of that nature. Having teachers be able to go and observe some of the great fourth grade teaching strategies that were used in order to improve co-teaching at Greenview. And also, we had our gifted intervention specialists beginning of last year, I think it was, with Ray, um, and Tammy, the whole department. We allowed the team to kind of come together and really hear out the gifted intervention specialist ideas on what they think would work. So you can see over there on the left, uh, we had a tremendous, um, tremendous scores with our gifted acceleration. For grade four math, the students took the fourth grade OST. Sixteen of them placed advanced, two perfect scores, two accomplished. The fifth graders, this is where we accelerated them. The fifth graders, this is where we accelerated them. Some of our fifth grade students took the sixth grade OST and you can see there, all students scored either advanced or accomplished. And our sixth grade math actually took the eighth grade OST, which is huge. And again, we had five advanced, two perfect scores, five accomplished. So a hundred percent of those students that we did accelerate really did an awesome job and kudos to those gifted intervention specialists that worked with them. All right, next slide. Um, areas for improvement. So this, this one hurts when we looked at the data, but you can see over here on the right, Greenview got a sixty-nine point nine percent on PI. Seventy percent was three stars. So we were point one away from three stars, which is hard to take. Um, that could just be one student moving up a band or a student, um, with relation to any sort of chronic absenteeism, just something so tiny that we could have gotten to that three star. So steps for improvement that we're gonna continue focusing on at Greenview. Again, continuing to improve our co-teaching strategies. We've been working on that very hard for a couple of years now. Um, again, you've heard about the no new instruction time in the morning every day, why it's so important for our students to get there on time. We are early, but we open our doors at seven AM. Um, that first part of our day for like forty minutes is intervention and enrichment time. Again, where students go on their I-ready pathways. We have our reflex math facts, we have typing club. And teachers at that time are pulling small groups based on data to really help our students move up their bands. Um, greatest opportunity, again, when we met with the ESC and really looked deep into our data, is moving students from one band to the next band with even a strong focus on those at the limited to basic and then basic to proficient. That's where we're going to get, uh, the most points on the state report card. Again, a strong focus on our students with disabilities, um, really focusing on equitable access to high-quality instruction, making sure that they have those high-quality texts in front of them in our curriculum, using that with fidelity in all classrooms. And then one thing that we started this year that's been awesome is our content leaders for ELA and math and also our special ed content leaders have been leading one staff meeting a month where administration goes into those meetings and we co-facilitate that. They really are leading the charge and really looking at that data by content area, which has been really an awesome thing for them to do, um, each month. So those are some things that we're going to plug away with this year. All right, and I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Fuller at Memorial.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about Memorial's successes and some things that we need to do for improvement with each of you tonight. Um, I think it is important to highlight some of the work that my colleagues are doing at the younger ages because then they just pass that all over to me and I love you for it. Um, so some of the things that, that have been phenomenal at Memorial, first I want to talk about the curriculum, right? And I want to talk about the teachers who work so hard every single day, who are dedicated to making a difference because that's number one, that makes a difference. The curriculum and the hard work that the teachers put in. So some of the things I want to talk about, overall Memorial traditionally has been rated probably about a two-ish, two. I am very, very happy that we were a three this year. Though we have some things to improve upon, here are some things I think that contribute to that. Um, Algebra I, we had a hundred percent passage. Every student that took that class passed. These were our seventh graders who took the eighth grade test. Honors ELA, grade seven, one hundred percent passage. That means everybody was proficient or higher. The average scale score did increase for grades six to seven in both ELA and math. Um, our seventh grade writing improved to fifty percent above proficiency, seventeen percent in sixth grade, so we did show some improvement. Some of the things I think that contribute to that, first of all, it's a BLT that is focused. Um, our BLT consists of a content, every content is represented in our BLT. We started the school year by taking the RTFI. And with the RTFI, it looked at our practices that we do in the building as a leadership team. Um, and it was honest feedback that we all gave each other. We rated ourselves as far as, um, if we were focused, what was our goal? Were we accomplishing those things? What were our checks and balances? And so from that, we decided to have a writing literacy goal. One of the things from the district was a writing goal and we decided the building to add academic vocabulary, which played a part in the, in the writing of our students as well. Um, the explicit writing and more focused and intentional planning time amongst our teachers and our common planning time. So teachers are placed in teams. Uh, this is our second year doing that. This year has been much more focused than last year because everything is falling in place. Um, we also have time for content facilitators to meet with all of their teachers as well. Some of the things that we do need to work on, um, in the next slide, is we will take a look at, um, thank you very much, our literacy lab. So we noticed that some of our students are just not meeting the mark for a variety of reasons. So we have a new course this year, it's a literacy lab, and we can focus on some of those fundamental things that students are struggling in. Science benchmark traditionally has not been given at Memorial. That's something we want to do. Um, we also looked at science scores and noticed that we need more time to practice. There's the academic vocabulary, there's the writing, and the more the students are given the opportunity to test and see some of the questions, the better they will do when the Ohio State test is given. Uh, we are using the OST item analysis and classroom assessment data to pinpoint specific skill gaps. We have strategic scheduling for grades seven and eight. We focus on moving students, as my colleague spoke about, from one band to the next. Emphasis is always limited to basic and basic to proficient, but I don't want to leave out the, those kids who are accomplished and advanced. We still need to push them along. So while we are focused on our limited to basic, there is also work to do with our upper echelon. Um, work with teams to find trends in I-ready data and the ELA benchmark as well. Use data, we wanted to identify those gaps that students need assistance on as well. Focus classes, specialized instruction. The day starts with a focus period. As we have evolved over the past few years of having this time, it's important, again, as I will say what one of my colleagues said, coming to school every day and coming on time, you can't say enough because that's thirty minutes of enrichment or remediation that we could be working with students. That's a very important time of the day for our classes. We, again, created the literacy lab and we have data-driven building leadership team. So our building leadership team meets once a month. When we meet, we look at data. So if one of our goals is writing, teachers bring samples of writing and we take a deep dive into it. What did students score on this writing, um, project? Why did they score that? Where do we need to add more work for the students? What are we missing? The more focused we are as a unit, the better our students will perform. But parents, I can't say it enough, I need them in class every day on time. Thank you. And with that, Ms. Harris.
Thank you, Dr. Fuller. I am Marnies Harris, the principal of Brush High School. Um, my stuff's a little shorter than all of my lovely colleagues. As you can see, at Brush High School, we are trending up in every academic area. High school grade card is a little tricky because a lot of our areas that a lot of people focus in on are behind one year. So the graduation rate, we had three stars. That actually was the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So one of the things I want to highlight that I am super proud of in my team, our teachers, our counselors, it came out that we have ninety, last year we were ninety-four point four percent graduation rate. So that's huge for our demographics. Yeah, give it up for my babies. So that will put us at four stars, so that's what's going to be on the grade card. Um, and if we can give a shout out to Ray and Dom and Josh who believed in the, the certification pathway. We went from sixty-three percent to seventy point two-five percent for our students earning certifications in one year. That, that's huge. Um, one of the goals and one of the charges that Dr. Cable has given me uh, is to turn Brush High School into a comprehensive high school. And that is a, something that I don't take lightly. We want students to be able to create a portfolio when they leave, whether it's going to the military, whether it's going to college or they're going out to the business world, that they are equipped for those next steps. I'm short. So areas of improvement. When you look at the grade card, a lot of times the conversation is how many students can we move from proficient to advanced to accelerated? But if you look at the grade card closely, it's about moving, you have point three and limited to point six, moving from limited to basic. So one of the things that I'm working with my team with is looking at how many students can we get from limited to basics, which would make huge gains when we start looking at our achievement. That's okay, I think I have it memorized. Uh, one of the other things that we are looking at, we are looking at our career tech. As you know, we, uh, this year, I believe that we are, uh, we have, in our grade card, we have a career tech rating. So we are creating more opportunities for our students when it comes to career tech. We will start the pre-nursing program. We will have another section of our exercise sports science. We are also looking at some senior-only credentials that are housed and focused for our Brush students. Another area that we're looking at is exploration. One of the things that we are finding is that our ninth and tenth graders need to be exposed to more college and career readiness activities or opportunities so when they get to the eleventh and twelfth grade, they can make more data-informed decisions. Uh, working with my team early and often. We are pulling families and students in early and often. We don't want to wait until it's time to take the state test to start talking about, oh, this is where we want to improve. We're starting to have those meetings now, bringing our families in. Uh, I get calls from, uh, parents saying the teachers that called me, we're really pushing our parent-teacher conference because we want, my push is to show that everyone has a, a stake in the grade card. So when you look at the newsletter, it's about attendance. So parents, yes, you have a part. Teachers, you have a part. When you take ACT, you have a part. Everyone has a stake in the, uh, building grade card, so that is one of our big pushes. And we want to create more opportunities. Yes, I did talk about limited and basic, but I want to create more healthy, rich opportunities for our students who are proficient and accelerated. They are not classroom, uh, teacher assistants. What are we doing for that deep enriched, um, instruction? So that's what I have for Brush.
Really quick to wrap up, I think it's important, you know, this grade card determines a lot and in the future, it's going to maybe even determine some funding issues. So I think it's important that we know what's going on in our buildings. And a few years ago, we started with a charge of having our principals be more than building managers and, and turn them into instructional leaders. And I think that we've seen that today. They can talk their data and that's important. Um, if you go back to the first slide, I will finish up with a few things. You've heard a lot of things tonight, fidelity curriculum. We know, we ask you to approve curriculum every few years, all the time, and you heard it's working, high-quality materials in front of kids. We also heard a lot about the no new instruction and I want to talk a little bit about that real quick. That part and no new instruction for that K through three literacy is so key because that's where we're not performing as we should. We're not moving kids off a rim in the, from the first to second and the second to third grade. So then they go into fourth grade and we're already starting that cycle of being below. So we're really focused on that no new instruction piece. That means flooding the grade level, teachers are separating kids, they're looking and touching on their needs. That's our, that's probably our biggest focus this year. In the previous years, it was in math and HMH. And right now, it's that K through three literacy. The other part is that achievement, you heard a lot of talk about that. That's moving kids up those chains, limited, basic to limited, um, sorry, limited to basic, basic to proficient. That's core instruction on grade level that we push all the time. Core instruction on grade level and then that real-time intervention to get those and knowing who those kids are. And finally, this is the last one that the college and career workforce is, is new and I think Ms. Harris spoke great about it. We are looking for different avenues. We need to get our high schoolers focused and ready for college, career and military, wherever they choose. That has a lot of components, so we are expanding, as she said, lots of our opportunities for kids. And in addition, making sure that our accelerated and honors kids are getting opportunities. I think Greenview has started the way. We are gonna have to do geometry here soon at Memorial. Um, so that's important and we want to continue to do that. So I think we, when you look at our report card, we have identified our strengths, but we've also identified where we can make major improvements. So when you hear things like NNI, you know why we're doing it. NNI is to improve the early literacy in that K through three. When you hear explicit writing, it's to improve our writing skills where it focuses on our achievement, which is gonna close that gap on those, on those achievement scores. Because remember, we are compared to the top two percent of the districts in the state of Ohio when you talk about achievement. So it's just not a cut number. We're always fighting that battle. If they score higher, we need to go higher. And we've kept it pretty, and we've kept it pretty, um, even here, so I think we're pretty proud of that. So are there any questions on anything? All right, and we'll leave it at that.
Real quick, that was my, I was gonna actually have you go over the NNN ti, NNI time because like Mrs. Bastok said, and I want to reiterate it, that is gonna be a huge push for us and it's, it's gonna be outside of the box. Um, and I know it's gonna stretch some, stretch some teachers, stretch some students. They're gonna be moving around classrooms, they're gonna, they're gonna have a lot going on. But in order to, for those performance bands to move to the next band from limited to basic, basic to proficient, we have, we have to start pushing and we have to start looking at different alternatives and how we can do this. And they have a set plan. All the principals behind me spoke about it and I appreciate it because this conversation is not gonna leave anywhere or go anywhere. And I appreciate the principals, one, for their time, two, for their, um, presentations and, and three, a motto that, that I live by personally is if what you did yesterday looks big, you haven't done much today. And with that being said, to see the highlights, you always do that, but then to really look at what are we doing next? How do we continue to improve? For me, um, that, that's what it's all about. So kudos to the CNI team, the principals, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what NNI time comes out of this year. I know Ms. Bishko has a plan for herself in the elementaries and with that MTSS push. So we'll, we'll continue to grind it. So thank you all very much.
Item two point five, public comments. Do we have any?
Mr. Hill? Item three, the minutes. The minutes of the regular meeting of September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five will be approved as recorded or corrected. Furthermore, the reading of these minutes will be waived. Can I get a motion to approve item three point one? Mr. Hill, can we get a roll call?
Ms. Sanders?
Aye.
Ms. Sanders?
Aye.
Mrs. Shob.
Aye. Item four, treasurer's report.
Good evening. Recommend for approval, item four point one, the financial reports for month end September twenty twenty-five. Item four point two, the month-end bank reconciliation for September twenty twenty-five. Item four point three, the investment earnings for month end September twenty twenty-five. Item four point four, the financial forecast for October twenty twenty-five. Item four point five, we have three donations for approval. And item four point six, recommend approval of four point one through four point five.
Can we get a motion to approve items four point one through four point five? Any questions or comments?
Again, just looking at the donations, thanks to Bartletree Experts and their, um, caring for our trees because it's so important.
And then I just wanted to run through the forecast since we kind of did it out of order this year. Um, with the new update, the one thing I want to point out is it's not called the five-year forecast anymore, obviously. It's called, it's a basic financial forecast. Um, the couple of other changes are it shaves off. It's not five years out, it's only four years out. And they also would like us to get, where I've always preached worst-case scenario for the forecast, they like it to be a little more realistic. So there are some areas that I've kind of tightened and toned, toned back a little bit, not input maybe as much of a, that cushion in there that I have in previous years. Uh, that's obviously something that, a little bit difficult for a treasurer to do because obviously I always want to plan for worst case. Um, so there are some areas, but, uh, the main things I want to point out, uh, for instance, in the general property tax line representing seventy-three point five-nine percent of our general proper, of our overall revenue. Uh, the one big item in here is that the, with the revow last summer, The one big item in here is that the, with the revow last summer, the county tax bills didn't get the information in, in a timely fashion, so the bills kind of went out later. So our collections did take a dip based on that. So in years past, I've always preached about not banking on delinquent property tax collections for future forecast, or for future years. I actually have a higher-than-normal delinquency in there because of that. We saw, I estimate roughly about 500,000.
For now, sir.
Yes, just based on the timing of collections. Bills went out super late, so we're expecting to see, we should see that recovered, I would hope, in the first half of next year. I mean, because we've averaged somewhere between 92 and 95% collection percentage previously and we're well below that obviously right now, just in that one year. Pretty much standard operating procedure for unrestricted grants and aid, restricted grants and aid, this is 100% based on the binding budget and the foundation payments we receive. I still continue to flatline those because I, obviously I don't want to bank on future binding budgets, especially with the direction they're going of basically flatlined revenue or decreasing. The state share local property taxes, this is our homestead and rollback, that's pretty much directly tied to the general property taxes. So those are pretty, pretty, pretty close, run pretty concurrent with that first line of general property taxes. And then all other revenue, same as years past, you see a slight decrease over the length of the forecast in this area. That's due to obviously our money getting smaller, cash on hand, our interest earnings will decrease along with that. And then to the expenditure side of things, personal services, same thing, this is our usual, this is 100% dependent on our current contracts with all three unions. You do see the, the years of the contract that are in there, you see the COLA costs and the step increases. If we don't have a current contract for that year in the future, which would be your 28, 29 year in this forecast, it is only the step increases that are considered. And then the one thing I do want to point out is our employee retirement insurance benefits. This has a higher-than-normal increase. Typically, I run it 6% range. I did bump it up a little bit because we are looking at some serious benefits decisions in the future and I want to account for that. So that's why that number, you do see some sizable jumps year over year in that because of that exact reason. Pretty much standard procedure, first of service, supply and material, capital outlay. I do flatline all three of those for that exact reason, that we're going to continue to do zero-based budgeting and really evaluating increases. I honestly probably would have factored in a little bit more if it wasn't the transition because I think with inflation and the cost of things just growing, but I did stick to the standard just because of the new mindset behind the forecast. So to, to close, ending cash balance expected to decline during the fiscal years 27 through 29, from 5 million at the end of 27 to an estimated negative balance of 29.5 million at the end of fiscal year 29. Again, the same tagline, this is not unexpected, however corrective action will occur over the next couple of years in an effort to reduce anticipated expenses, as well as the district has a 7.9 mil tax levy on the ballot, whereas 6.9 is dedicated to this specific, the operating piece of this. So again, I still list, this is worst-case scenario, obviously some of the mindset is toned back, can't help it. So continued efforts, we hope to try and close that gap and with the support of the community, trying to get us through the financial forecast, not the five-year forecast. Any questions?
I just, I just wanted to add that Josh and I, levy or no levy, are looking at the books closely and looking at, you know, as, as things dissolve over the next few years, we have to do our due diligence to our taxpayers, to our communities and really look at our numbers in terms of whether it's staff, whether it's certain programs, whatever that might be. But our pledge to the community has always been that we're going to be financially responsible and whatever comes out of that, we're going to keep the board updated, we'll make those decisions together, but we're not taking anything lightly.
Okay. Mr. Hill, can we get a roll call?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shelby?
Aye. Item five, superintendent's items.
Under, let me skip over there quick. Under five certified staff seeking the approval. We have some appointments and as well as some paid leave of absences and unpaid leave of absences.
Can we get a motion to approve item 5.1?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Ms. Shelby?
Aye. Item six, superintendent's items.
Under six, seeking the approval of 6.1. We have one resignation.
Can we get a motion to approve item 6.1?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Ms. Shelby?
Aye. Item seven, superintendent's items.
Under seven, seeking the approval of under 7.1. We have appointments, change of assignments, gratification of resignations and paid leave of absence and unpaid leave of absences.
Can we get a motion to approve item 7.1?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Ms. Shelby?
Aye. Item eight, superintendent's items.
Under eight, 8.1, seeking the approval for supplemental contracts. I won't name them all, there's a lot.
Can we get a motion to approve item 8.1?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? Looks like we're getting ready for wino sports.
Yeah.
Okay. Hearing none, can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shelby?
Aye. Item nine, superintendent's items.
Under nine, business, seeking the approval for 9.1 through 9.3.
Can we get a motion to approve items 9.1 through 9.3?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call?
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Ms. Shelby?
Aye. Item 10, superintendent's items.
Under 10, curriculum instruction, seeking the approval for 10.1 through 10.4.
Can we get a motion to approve item 10.1 through 10.4?
So moved.
Any questions or comments?
Just again, I think I say this every year, but it's always, I remember when my girls went to Washington and hearing how exciting it was for them, I just think it's a wonderful opportunity and so glad that we're still allowing this.
Absolutely. Glad they're not going right now during the show. Some districts are dealing with it.
10.4 is always a good one for me, you know, I'm always enthusiastic about training, especially with the data training for them, I think that's great. Thank you.
That's under the leadership of, I gotta give her a shout out because I know she's watching, but Lisa Miller does all this, so.
Okay. May we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shelby?
Aye. There are no items under 11, so item 12, superintendent's items.
Under 12, just seeking the approval for under exceptional children, 12.1 through 12.3.
Can we get a motion to approve items 12.1 through 12.3?
So moved. So moved.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shelby?
Aye. Item 13.1, information, any information to share? I guess I'll give a shout out to the boys soccer team. They won their first playoff game last night.
Yeah! That's good.
In Ashtruda, so they go to Westlake Saturday, so good luck, guys.
Yeah, that's cool.
It's so, it's so hard.
I don't think, I don't think.
Rewinding now, we have what, two more football games?
Oh, Lord. It's cold.
And then that senior night's the 24th.
Yes.
Right, yeah. Okay. 13.2 unfinished, new and unfinished business, I don't think we have any. 13.3, board policy first reading. The superintendent presents the following policies for first read and preliminary review. The South Ucal Literate Board of Education will be asked to vote to adopt these policies at the board meeting being held on November 11th, 2025. Okay. We have 14, 22.02, which is a rescind, 1623, revision, 1662, rescind, 2260, revision, 2260.01, revision, 2266, revision, 2430.02, revision, 3122.02, rescind, 3123, revision, 3130, revision, 3362, rescind, 4122.02, rescind, 4123, revision, 4362, rescind, 5130, revision, 6109, new, 7541, rescind, and 8462, revision. So that's just the first reading for those. Item 14, we have any public comments?
No.
Perfect. 14.2, there's no need for executive session, so can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Have a great night. All right.
It's not. I said it's not. I tell you my friend. I'm gonna have to go back and watch this. I'm gonna have to go back and watch this. I'm gonna have to go back and watch this. Next. I see. We got it. 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 We got it.